First one, if you don't know, is Commissioner Tom Bloom, Commissioner Ed Hawkins, I'm Eldon Callan, Commissioner. And Renetta McClure is our County Administrator. And Bob Doyle is our Director of Facilities and Management. And we've got some other people here that work for the county that you'll get an opportunity to talk with. The purpose, what we're trying to do here is just have an open, basically, town hall discussion about the fact that we have a major loss of a reliable, four-years-revenue source to counties throughout the state of West Virginia. And that was the coal severance fund. Many years ago, probably when I was still in the military, many, many years ago, the county commissioners at that time felt that the coal severance fund was that fund that would be the one to draw upon and support outside agencies. Everything from volunteer fire departments to arts and recreation and health, and you'll see the rest of the list. Over the last five years that I've been a commissioner, that fund has continued to go down, down, down. And this year, it drastically cut to the point where, beyond what the state, beyond what the state had expected, and certainly beyond what we had budgeted, even though we cut our projections by a third, it dropped by two-thirds. Now, that brings us here tonight. Other than those basic funds, the general fund rests entirely on the real property owners. And the general fund, constitutionally, the counties must fund their constitutional officers and their constitutional departments. So, the question is, and it could be legislative, it could be a proposal to go to the legislature and push for an advancement of fee or advancement of a natural, another type fee, it could be changing the structure to where the local areas, the counties and all, could tap into different types of funds. There's a number of different things that could be done. I'm gonna turn, what we're gonna do here, I'm gonna finish here in a second, and then I'm gonna let Commissioner Bloom and Commissioner Hawkins say a couple of things. And then, procedurally wise, Renetta is gonna go over various charts, not really to discuss them, you'll have an opportunity to get copies of them and look at them, but to show you, this is the kind of drastic financial cut, revenue cut, that the county is facing. And what we want to do here is just, just get ideas. What do you think's important and need to be funded? You know, there's some basic things that we all know needs funded, your first responders, your health and safety. And how would you propose that we go about funding those, which you find acceptable? I just want to put this caveat on before I turn it over to Commissioner Bloom. Whatever is decided, whatever approach, if you're talking levy, or even advancement of a type of sales tax, things like that, whatever that is, there are things that we can lobby for, but there is nothing that we can advocate for. For instance, the Transit Authority has already presented a proposal for a public transit levy. What we do as a commission is re-review whether it fits in all the statutory categories, and they request for it to go to levy. We cannot use public funds, or we cannot ourselves go out and promote that levy. It's not allowed. That means the people that are advancing that levy are the ones that can promote it. But we are specifically prohibited from going out and saying, "Oh, we think this levy's great, we need you to pass it." It's set up to be presented to the taxpayers, and the taxpayers are the ones that make that decision, and the public officials have no right to push it. We can answer questions, this is how it works, or we're all, but we cannot promote it. So I just wanted to make that clear as to, there are a number of different ideas and approaches, that's what we want to hear. We don't really want to hear complaints, we hear complaints all the time. What we want to hear is, what do you think? What's your ideas? Do you have, you might, there might be someone in here that will have the perfect idea, that everyone will, can jump on and say it's the perfect thing to do. That's all we're doing here, is just trading ideas and open discussion. And I've already talked too long, so I'm gonna shout out and turn it over to Commissioner Bloom.
Thank you, I was told I have one minute, so I have to be very careful. Okay. First of all, I want to thank you for coming out on an evening. I know there's a lot of other priorities that you have to be with family, but I think this is the turning point for Montegoa County. We have the opportunity in this room to make a difference, whether it's, whether we fund health department, which we have to look at very carefully, whether it's parks, whether it's a new baseball field, whether it's funding of 88 different agencies that we fund. Basically, all we are asking for is ideas, there will be people, whether pro or con, please let them speak, and then we're gonna break up into small groups, and then listen to what they say, we're gonna take all the information, gather it, and then we will publicize where we're at. I do hope that we're looking forward to some radical changes in how we perceive and want to move forward with, I will point-blank say, with recreation. Thank you.
I think that most of you know why you're here, you have a vested interest in a particular group. In reality, the only vehicle that we have at this time, with the exception of property tax, is 2% levy on behalf of whatever group is willing to work toward that levy. So, even though there's a lot of ideas that we know we may have, it will take creative ways of getting things done at the state level to give us anything beyond that. So, when you're being asked to speak, as Eldon said, it's not a complaint, everybody I know thinks that their group deserves the special attention. The problem is that the money, or the funding for the special attention, is not there. It's, you know, it's reduced by 90% in just, in the short time that I've almost been in office. So, keep that in mind when we turn the microphone over after Renetta presents her presentation. Thank you.
Okay, can everybody hear me? The first slide that we have for you tonight is just a breakdown of the budget for general fund and for coal severance. You can see by the items that are in black, those are all funded from general fund monies, which are tax collections, and other fees. And then also, we have items in red that are funded from coal severance, items that are typically funded from coal severance. Last year, we realized that we were gonna have a shortfall, so we had to move some of these items over to the general fund for a temporary fix to the situation. So, we are in the budget process now. I know we've received many applications so far, we're expecting to receive more. The deadline is Friday at 4:00. If you could get them in, that would be great. If you see, general government, that's the statutory offices that Commissioner Callan spoke about earlier. 2015, the budget was 14-plus million. 2016, we're currently working off of 16 million. And then, you will see that none of the, none of the coal severance funds, general government whatsoever. Public safety, fire departments, that's where our volunteer fire departments, hazmat, forest fire crew, is all funded from coal severance money. And you can see down there, 303,000. This year, it's 335,000. Health and sanitation, you can see, the health department is funded from general fund, but our other programs, from mental health, and solid waste, water and sewage, and litter control. Culture and recreations, our county parks, but other parks in recreation, such as Ebertsville Community Park, and some of the other parks in recreation that we have is all funded, swimming pools from the shack, and there's also the library, that's a big one. Social services, human resources, senior citizens groups, public transit, and homeless shelter fall under social services. And you can see there that the budget, look how much it's reduced from 2015 to 2016 because of all of those things that we, you know, had to move over to general fund. This is a general fund comparison, this is not coal severance, this is only general fund. And you can see, over the course of two years, where our budget fell along the lines, social services, down there at the bottom, health and sanitation. So you can see, you know, where we've had to pick up from coal severance into general fund. Okay, and here's our coal severance. So, you know, it's sad that we are losing this revenue, but we have some tough decisions to make in the future. Okay, this is, this is revenue that we've received from general county in the orange, and the gray is coal severance. This year, up until December 31st, we'd only received about half, not even quite half, of what we had received totally last year in six months. You all have made, have seen this chart before, when we first started looking at the coal severance fund for this, the six months that we're working on right now. You will see how the decrease, we've decreased in revenue over the last few years, and how now that we're supplementing 100% right now, budgeted outside agencies from coal severance. So... Okay, and then we also talked about, where do my tax dollars go? Some information we received from the chief tax deputy this afternoon, for tax year 2014, so this is taxes that were collected last year. The state receives less than 1%. The county receives 18%. The Board of Education receives 73% of all taxes that are collected. Municipalities, municipal TIF districts, county TIF districts, and then there's just a very slight portion that's undistributed. So, we received $81,223,272. So, we wanted to give an example of those people, so they could see what kind of, for your house, it's valued at 225,000, okay? The state receives $6.58 of your taxes. The county, 315.36. And the Board of Education receives $1,006.52. So, out of the 1328 that you may have paid, you can see that the county doesn't actually receive that much.
Thank you, Renetta. These charts and information will be available to anyone, just ask, request it from Renetta or Colleen, or Colleen Walters, our secretary slash now grant coordinator, is in the back, you can request them for, also. If we happen to run out of them, just leave her the information, and she will be happy to email that information to you. What we're going to do right now, where are the mics set up? Oh, you're gonna put that one up and that one up. What we're gonna do, so we move too quickly, is, as I said, this is just an informal town hall meeting. If you, we'd appreciate if you told us your name and whether you're a citizen of the county. I've had these meetings in the past before, and had people complain about us, and found out they didn't even live here, so. But, just, if you just line up, we'd like everyone to have an opportunity to speak, that wants to, after we have this general session, to throw out ideas. Then we're gonna break up into smaller groups of areas of interest, where you, smaller groups might want to kick around, or feel more comfortable talking about their particular issue, to see if you want to, want to share additional ideas between each other, but we'll explain that further. As of right now, just, anyone, feel free, you can line up right behind one behind the other.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. And we're gonna try to time it to two minutes, I don't know if Renetta has her clock or not.
Are we on?
But, yeah.
Okay, my name is Sandra Christopher, I've lived here all my life, and I'm Secretary of the Montegoa County Volunteer Fire Communities Association. And we've been in before, you know who we are. A couple years ago, we came up with this proposal, which didn't fly, but I'm wondering now, if not, this might not be the time to think about it. I got my tax slips out today. Now, the rate where, that you multiply my assessed values at, who determines, who determines that? Where does that rate come from?
Oh, you mean the levy rate?
No, well, the rate on my tax, my tax tickets.
Property tax.
My property tax.
Well, the particular body, the Board of Education determines their amount, the county commission determines their levy, or what's called a millage rate, the city determines their millage rate.
So you do have the authority to raise it or lower it, depending on what?
Yeah, we dropped it drastically when I first, well, the second year I was here, because of the property reappraisals. We cut it by over 3, 3.5%, that millage rate. And it was part of a three-year program of allowing these new property appraisals to balance things out, to be revenue-neutral, and it was, we had to sell it to the governor, and we had to sell it to the, to the tax department, had to sell it to the assessor, but that was, that was to help alleviate that. So, yeah, we drastically cut it, with the idea that at the end of the third year, it would be balanced out. We're still lower than what it was originally, but yes, we are now the fifth lowest leverage rate county, is that right?
Fifty-first out of 50.
Okay.
Fifty-first.
Okay. Well, back in 2014, when we brought this up, we brought up multiplying your tax bill, not your assessment value, your tax bill by 38 cents. So, if you, if your tax bill was $1,000, it would cost you 38 cents to support the fire departments. So, and, like I say, it didn't fly at that time. But, I sit down today, and at 38 cents for my tax bill, it would cost me $1.33, and according to what our calculations were at that time, we would raise over $1 million, $1,400,000, I think it was. And, and I went through my slips, and like, my personal property would go up 48 cents, my real estate, less my exemption, would go up 25 cents, and my other real estate, which I pay full price for, would go up 64 cents. So, it would only raise my taxes $1.37, and...
Would it make a huge difference?
Which, yeah, you're raising $1 million, but it's already costing me $1.37. So, I've got copies of what our proposal was back then, that you can go over again. And, but, you know, it's a thought, I mean, if you could raise the base rate, because I figured out what the, what the base rate would be, that that's all that would cost me. It would of course, cost other people other money, because maybe they have more property than I have, but that's what mine came out, so.
That's great.
That's my idea.
Thank you very much. Those are the kind of things that we have, well, she might want to hold on to it further, smaller groups.
No, I got that.
Oh, you got extra copies? Okay, great, okay.
Keep in mind now, this serves one group, but...
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be for the fire department. I mean, you could raise money like this and divide it up, because at that time, you didn't, didn't like the fact that we wanted X amount of dollars for each fire department, you weren't in agreement with that, that was one of the reasons why it didn't fly. But, yeah, you could take this money and...
Yeah, I understand what you say, you commissioners, but none of these commissioners were here. But I understand what you mean by, you didn't, the commission at that time didn't agree.
Yeah, they two agree with us.
Okay, my name's Bob Brookover, I'm the President of the Montegoa County Volunteer Fireman Association, plus I'm the Chief of Blacksville Volunteer Fire Department. And as with Sue, she had the figures up there. One thing I do need to point out, I've been in the fire department 46 years. In the last few years, if you dial 911, you automatically get a volunteer fire department. I don't care if it's Johnny's goat fell over the bank, or Grandma fell out of her chair, you get a volunteer fire department. It's just that simple, you really do. Those of you that aren't volunteer firemen, you do not believe what I'm telling you, but I'm telling you, we're out on rock slides, high water, power wires down, anything that you can possibly think of, that a person could call 911 for, the volunteer fire departments are taking care of it. Unless they're right in the city of Morgantown. And I know you don't think about that, but I'm telling you, somebody better start thinking about it, because it's getting to the point where it's getting harder and harder and harder to try to keep these doors open and keep going. You know, it's the worst I've ever seen it, and it's not gonna get any better. You know, I know for a fact, if you call 911, you don't get the library, you don't get a swimming pool, you get a volunteer fire department. That's the way it works.
Thank you, Bob. There's two mics, so you can just get in line. Does anyone else want to have some great ideas, comments, thoughts? You can go ahead and line up, you don't have to wait for the other person, we just, one after, go as quickly as possible.
Hi, I'm Catherine Artis, Superintendent of Chestnut Ridge Park. The other park superintendents are here as well, Lori Husted and Rachel Mitchell from Camp Muffley and Mason Dixon. We're lucky to be able to actually earn 75% of our revenue and spending every year, but 25% is provided by taxpayers. And that keeps us limited on the updates that we could provide, which would also bring additional funding in. So, some of the big projects, we really need to be able to think about in the next few years, include creating a return system for the ski slopes at Chestnut Ridge, or updating cabins and putting in a new pool at Muffley, or creating an office out at Mason Dixon, which is nearly 300 acres of land that no one knows is owned by the county, run by the county, has hiking, like biking trails. So, being able to fund things like this, keep them funded, be able to create updates out there, we have numbers for all of this, pricing for what we want. We would love to talk to you if you have questions, we would love to be able to get additional funding, I know people aren't, people are stretching for what they have, but we would like that, then some. But, we all have huge dreams, and we'll see how we can get that funded. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Terri Cutright, I'm a resident, I'm a small
business owner, but I've been involved in project management for about 28 years. And my success, when I am faced with challenges like this, is I don't look for one answer. You kind of look for a menu of items, and, you know, whether it's a levy to help with some of these issues, the fire department, transit, you look at the sales tax, maybe don't take it all the way to 2%, maybe look at a half of percent. Property taxes, I've talked to Tom about this, I have friends that live in Essex County, New Jersey. When we go there, obviously, they have phenomenal amenities, but they pay for them, because that's what that community wants. And I think we are in a situation of, because we're Mont County, we're Morgantown, home of WVU, this community demands excellence, and in order to get that, somebody or some way, we're gonna have to pay for it. The user fee that failed years ago, and employee fee. Look around at how many Pennsylvania license plates there are of all the people that come to this county to work, and yet they drive on our roads and utilize our services. The fire fee, which my understanding, my very brief understanding, is that would require state legislation in order to have that in place. I'm one of those people, when I get my notice from the Star City Fire Department, they are important enough for me to write a check. I realize not everybody is doing that, but I think if, if a fire fee was in place, that would be able to handle that. That's just all I have, and like I said, I, my other suggestion, and when I did project management, I would look towards somebody else. So there are other counties across this country that have dealt with these issues, and have gone through this whole process, and I would look for some templates out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Terri.
Hi, my name is Bridget Hindman, and I work over at NIOSH, and my colleague Izzy has some handouts for y'all. Basically, we have an idea to maybe raise some additional revenue for the county, and it's basically a plastic band, plastic bag fee, so those plastic bags that you get when you go grocery shopping, a lot of counties have started imposing a fee, either per bag or per transaction. And it actually has a few benefits. For one thing, it's good for the environment, these plastic bags end up in our rivers and our ocean, and they're damaging to marine life. And let's be honest, who likes seeing these bags floating down the street or getting tangled in trees and bushes? It's just not a pretty sight. We have a beautiful state, we should keep it that way. So, we would like to propose that there's a plastic bag fee, maybe 5 cents per bag. The population of Mont County is just over 100,000 people, the average American uses 375 bags, 375 of these bags a year, meaning that the county could easily raise about $1 million. Other jurisdictions have actually imposed these fees. Brownsville, Texas, has raised $1 million. Washington DC, which yes, is much larger, they've been able to raise over $2 million consistently over the past four years. So not only is it good for our environment, it could be a really good source of revenue for the county as a whole to use. I think all of these services are actually really worthy of money, so wherever it needs to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'm really excited that people are really coming out with ideas, thank you.
Hi, my name is Bader Gigginbach, I'm the Vice President
of Morgantown Pony Baseball League, and I'm here with Heather Wolf, who's our treasurer. And the county's helped us in the past, and it's, it's not a huge amount of money compared to what you spend overall, but those few thousand dollars that we do get makes a huge difference, and we want to help in any way we can to make up the difference. I understand the coal severance problem, coal's always been cyclical, always will be. I personally am in favor of, if that's what it takes to have a levy to try to make up that ground, because we certainly don't want to lose any of the funding that we've been getting. You know, we had over 1,000 Morgantown youth play in our league last year, and we're spread all over the place. We're at Myland Park, we're on Bow Park Fields, and a lot of these fields need attention, and we're looking to work with you in any way we can to help. My own personal thought as far as an idea goes, is the wording of any levy, you know, we see how creatively they get worded sometimes, you know, I would tend to think that if a levy said parks and recreation, I can't imagine for a few more bucks on your property tax bill, I can't imagine there'd be a lot of people that would vote against that, I think it would, it would be successful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ella.
I don't know how to, I'm nervous about adjusting it. Thank you. Ella Belling, I'm the Executive Director for the Mon River Trails Conservancy, and I do live in the county. I'm, you know, could be a cheerleader for rail trails 24/7, but I do realize that a significant amount of our budget for our trail maintenance, maintenance is not an easily-funded thing through grants or even fundraising, comes from this county budget. And I agree with many of the things previously said about the fact that I think it takes a diversity of solutions, and I think it takes, all of these things are worthy causes, so I'm not here to toot just one horn. But, I would like to suggest a couple of ideas. One is something about the, it's regarding the hotel occupancy tax. And that, we do see an increase in hotels being built in this area, and, you know, a percentage of that goes directly to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, but I know that the rest of the funds get divvied out between the municipalities, and depending on where those hotels are. So, I suspect it could take a revisit of how that money gets divvied out, and whether or not we need to consider raising that tax, because I think that's something that might be an option as well. It's been, was done several years ago, but I think it's still fairly low for a city that has a great deal of events, and, or a region that has a great deal of events to draw in people from the outside of the state. My other idea is something that I don't know very much about, but I suggest talking to the city of Morgantown about. In 2010, apparently, they did an energy efficiency and energy services contract, and that did, I hear that that was a significant savings in the, in the budget for the city that then could be put to... that then could be put to, um, services and amenities. And so, um, I would suggest a conversation with some other areas that have seen a cut and have tried to come up with creative solutions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ella. Any, anyone else? We got a gentleman coming here.
Uh, Danny Paluga from Morgantown. Uh, I think, I'm certain that the county held the line on property taxes. I'm not certain all the other, uh, levying agencies did, so you might want to clarify that for the people in this room.
What's that? What about it? Yeah, yeah, well, you already said it. I mean, they didn't.
I'm Randy Hawes. I am a citizen and a patron and a, and a parent, I guess. I'm here to commend you for your consideration of the track and field facility, um, and also voice my own recommendation. I've spent five, six years driving all over the state to go to track meets with my children, because we can't host a home meet here, because we don't have a facility. Uh, before I moved here, I spent seven years on a school board in Idaho. Since I've been here, I've been scratching my head, wondering how this school board let university high school happen without a track built on it. It's a head scratcher to me. So I commend your consideration that can perhaps right that wrong. It, we've had awesome coaches and great kids, given their hearts to that program, and, you know, state championships, and quickly becoming a dynasty. So thanks for your consideration of that.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Hi there, Coach Blenka from Morgantown High School. First off, I'd like to look out at the crowd, thank Ed Frohne Apple University High Representatives, thank Mr. Summerlin, big runner in the community, Mike Ryan, my parents, some kids in the back of the room that have come out tonight. This track is a huge deal to us, because as you just heard, one of our parents at Morgantown High say, "We've never been able to host a meet." A lot of people are dumbfounded when they hear, "You're Morgantown, you guys have everything." No, we don't. There's a lot of things we don't have in Morgantown, and a track's one of them. The two, you know, largest schools in the county and two of the biggest schools in the state, neither one can host a meet, we're constantly traveling. We're the largest rostered sports in the county, track and cross-country, the running sports combined. What this would do for our state, we suffer an obesity problem. I'm probably right there, okay? Hi, Coach, I don't run, okay? I run my mouth, that's about it, but this is just something that's really important. I commend the commissioners and their help on this. I'm glad that many people came out tonight. We really need this facility. It's been a long time coming. I know a lot of the other concerns are out there as well, so hopefully we can really find some ways to get these things done. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Bruffy.
Commissioners, Dave Bruffy, I live in the county and I ride the bus. What I, uh, you, you all have contributed out of your general fund through coal severance, about $450,000 a year to transit every year since we were formed in 1996. It's $456,000 exactly. Um, that's about, at this point, about 10% of our $4.8 million budget. That's about 6,000 hours of bus service. And if we don't have funding for those 6,000 hours of bus service, there's not much we can do to make up for it. We have three options under state code to raise revenues. One of them is through Fairbox, which we raise about $200,000 a year, that 4.8 million through all of the services everywhere. If we raised our fares by 33%, it would raise about $60,000. So that's a pretty good shortfall for the increase in, in service or in cost. The other method that we have is through general fund contributions, like you and the, the city make to us. Or we can try to, to contract service. Statutorily, the only way we can come up with a dedicated funding source is through an excess property tax levy. It's a supermajority, it's very difficult to do, there are only about six other cities and municipalities, counties, that have excess property tax levies in the state to fund transit. Without that, we're going to have to take away 6,000 hours worth of service somewhere, and it's going to be difficult to take it away from the city who doesn't reduce funding or the university who hasn't reduced funding. So you see where we're going. We're going to end up removing service that's honestly vital to people in rural parts of the community. It's medical service, it's trips to the grocery store, it's socialization, it's their way to get out. We're talking about the Kingwood Pike, we're talking about Summer School Road, Haylick, Grafton Road, Brown's Chapel, Crown, which goes out about, around Opakiska through Fairmont Road, Cassville. Those are the kinds of services that we're talking about that will go away, we'll have no way to fund them. So that's why the Transit Authority has proposed an excess property tax levy. And we gave you some examples of rates and what those rates would mean to homeowners. So as an example for everyone in the room, if we proposed a tax that would allow us to continue our service that we have in place, and then to provide new service to a new track or a new swimming pool or a new recreation center, um, we were proposing about $1.8 million, and for a house that had a market value of $200,000, that would be $43.20 a year, to give you some idea of the, the kind of number that we're, that we're talking about to support. And what we were looking at was to maintain our current service, to provide some opportunity to continue growth services in areas where we know they're needed, and additionally, to try and expand the hours of service into the evenings. Our community's no longer an eight to five working community. We have an awful lot of services that are support services, like restaurants, and, um, really, they're human support services that we all use. They don't work eight to five. So I think my two minutes is probably up, but I wanted to explain what that was all about and why we made the request.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Danny.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Penny Pugh. I'm a resident of the county and of the city. I'm a trustee of the Morgantown Public Library System, which extends to branches throughout the county. Um, I know I don't have to make a case for the importance of libraries in our community. They're the place where public meetings are held, where people who can't afford internet have free internet access, where early literacy, adult literacy, literacies of all sorts occur. Um, we are funded very generously by the city of Morgantown and the state of West Virginia, um, but our funding from the state of West Virginia depends on maintenance of effort from other funding sources, and losing funding from the county commission may jeopardize what is about five, a little more than $5 per capita from state funds. Um, I don't have great new ideas. I didn't realize what sort of meeting this would be, actually, so I'm totally unprepared, speaking off the cuff, but I do agree with Terri Cutright that Morgantown and Mon County deserves services. This is the third most populous county in the state, we're the economic engine of the state, we hear it all the time, and yet we lag far behind other counties. Our per capita funding for public libraries is half what it is in Cabell County. So I would suggest, I don't, as a taxpayer, I should be embarrassed not to know where we are in the three-year plan about the millage, but I would suggest raising it.
Commissioner Hawkins can talk about it more so, but one of the things you need to know is that Cabell County has an excess levy for libraries.
They have a, they have a special law.
Well, what, I, I, okay, I misspoke.
No, but there are, there are, there are other counties, Harrison County is one that...
Many counties have levies.
Yes, they do have levies. And I, I guess the reason for assembling here tonight is that we do have a timeframe that would be continued upon in a short time to try and present a levy if there's interest on behalf of the groups, and you have to do it yourself, and sell it. In other words, we have a period till March the 24th, or excuse me, until February 24th, that it has to be presented to be on the ballot for the primary election. And if you actually want to pass something, you probably would stand a better theoretical chance in a primary than you would in the general election in the fall, particularly when we're going to be electing the president. So this, you know, this is why we have these areas of groupings, uh, but, you know, you're, you're more than welcome to, uh, go to several groups, you know, where you want to work for this particular entity.
Yes.
You may.
When the fire department was discussing during eleven, you had to get some up to 6,000.
No, that was a fire service fee. That's different than a levy, okay? A levy, a levy, basically, all we do here is to allow you, we can't work for you, allow you to present a levy that would require 60% of the community saying you are of value and we're willing to put our money toward you, whether it's fire, whether it's library, whether it's recreation, whether it's social services, however, you know, it's not one, uh, I think Cabell has up to 15 separate entities that they, and I know Harrison has about seven. So these are, you know, when, when you spoke of models, uh, these are, you know, these are models for at least this entity to look at.
Uh, and I, uh, I wanted to make clear, just so there was no confusion, we as commissioners can't go out and campaign for it, but any organization could go out and campaign for your own levies.
And we mentioned that, like a 2% levy, is that 2% of your assessed values? What is that 2%?
That, it's two cents, uh, two cents on the one, which would be four cents on class two. That's the way the millage works. Yeah, she had her hand up.
I just had to follow up. We seem to have gone from generating new ideas.
Well, we want, we do want new ideas, definitely.
The levy is what really...
No, 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 absolutely not. He was trying to explain and answer her questions. I don't know what the special law is in Cabell County, but if Cabell County has a special law, maybe we need to find out what that special law is, because I know they don't have any, any right to do anything that we don't have a right to do, so I don't know what that special law is. But that's why we're trying to search for another thing. I want to clarify another thing, so that everyone understands, because I hear this all the time, they don't seem to understand it. And I don't want to, uh, anyone to take this as somehow pointing fingers at anyone. Montague County has more tax-exempt property inside the county than any other of the 55 counties. Our, uh, our properties, our physical acreage is more tax-exempt than any other county in the state. So we talk about, and, and that's not a criticism, I mean, we're very fortunate to have many things, but you got to keep that in mind. When, when I get concerned about keep raising, raising, raising on the real property owners, when the real property owners make a very small percentage of the people that own property in Montague County. But I, I'm talking too much, I want, I want to let the next speaker speak.
Well, um, I'm another unprepared Penny. Penny Koska, this is really just off the top of my head, too, because I was beginning to get, to get the feeling that this is kind of a levy generating meeting now. And as a retired mental health provider, there are two voiceless groups I see here, and that is the Humane Society and the Mental Health Group, that may or may not be here to push their own agenda, and that concerned me somewhat, and don't even get me started on the property tax exemption part, because that...
Actually, I want to clarify...
But that isn't, but that is not what we're here for. There, there are still, okay.
Right. Uh, we're not talking about levies, number one. We're, we're looking for ideas. This is an open discussion. It's all right to have an open discussion, number one. Number two, this is not to, to justify or advance your particular issue to us. We'll do that in the budgeting process when each and every one of those groups will have an opportunity to come in and speak to it as they do every year. So that, just because someone's not here does not mean they're, they somehow lose consideration, because that's not the purpose of this meeting.
Yes, Ellen, a special levy would require a 60%...
Yes. Correct.
Any other, uh, input?
Jamie Summerlin, Morgantown, or Mon County resident. I just wanted to say that, my only request, because obviously a lot of people have different agendas, different thoughts, different ideas that are in here. As most of you know, I took a little journey a few years ago and got a chance to see a lot of communities up very close and personal, and got a chance to see some that were doing some amazing things. And having learned about this and did a little bit of research before I came in, one in particular was Salt Lake City, that has a recreation and parks tax for every $10 a penny is, you know, accepted, that goes directly to the community to help, you know, for recreation and parks. But what they did to help make that pass was, and what I'm asking the commission, as we've asked the city to do whenever we've met with them and talked about other things that are coming into play, just put a plan together and put it out in front of everybody, because we as a collective group can work to make it happen. Obviously, you can't, you know, go out and promote these things, but as we work together, we can help those things come about and really promote what we do have here. But that's something that, you know, as, as things are talked about, you know, if it's put out there and then stated where directly it's going to go to, and we've worked together to help make that happen, then it could be possible. Otherwise, it's just, oh, here comes another tax, nobody knows exactly where it's going. So that's all I'm asking, is as we focus on those things. Obviously, my focus is recreation, parks, you know, health and wellness in the community, veterans causes, obviously, which, you know, can continue to bring in revenue, but still just asking that you work together, you know, with the community and help us, you know, put the plans together, work with you guys to help, you know, get the community behind it, so.
That's, this is the first step in that, in that goal. We're hoping that this continues and it not just a one-time thing and then disappears. Any, anyone else wishing to speak to the large group? Uh, okay, seeing that, what we're gonna, Tom, why don't you go ahead and explain, you know where the tables are, or how you're going to set up which tables which?
What we thought, many of you may not want to speak in front of the large group, and many of you have specific interests. We have students from Morgantown High School. Rourke, how many do we, do we have?
Four.
Good, okay. Okay. If you turn around, you'll see, uh, sheets that say like parks and recreation, fairs and festivals, community center, library. We're going to put tables, you know, public safety, we have transit, we have, I can't see, Kelly, what's next to you?
Social services.
Social services. What we are going to ask you to do for the next 20 to 30 minutes is, for those of you who are right here, don't have to move the chair, but for those of you in these other groups, if you could pick up your chair, take it over, buy that sign, we will have a table set up. The person's going to take ideas for, you know, and suggestions and things you may want. I, I want to get it real clear, though, one of the problems with the county commission is that we only have two ways of generating funds right now, and that is the property tax, which is only a, a certain group of people, and coal severance. As many people come up with a fee or a tax, and I'll be, for example, this bag, I love the idea, the legislature, we're going to have to get them to allow us to do that. So I just want you to understand, so that is why when people say, "Is this promoting levies?" No, but that is just one other avenue that can be done. So at this time, what I'd ask you to do is if you see where the sheets are, to turn around, we're going to have people in the different areas to do that.
And, and the reason for looking at levies was just simply, there's a time consideration that if that's a point that you wish to pursue, then now would be the time to actually pursue that particularly entity. Other entities, of course, when ideas will be explored.
Well, we're hoping to use this as a, a group meeting where you get to know one another and share ideas between one another. Yes, Joyce?
Yes, um, my name is Joyce Royce, and I live in Morgantown, in the city limits. I just want to know how we get the legislature to pay attention to Morgantown. I keep hearing that, but we have city council people, we have county commissioners, we have delegates, we have senators, we have congressmen. I'd like to know how we get the legislature in Charleston to listen to us and help us figure out, how do we get the university to carry their fair share? Because I'm sorry, these laws are not right. I know that we want all of these services in Morgantown. I think everybody does. But I think we need to stop development in Morgantown, we need to stop increasing students at WVU until we implement something like a, an impact fee for developers, including the university, because we can't keep increasing development in this town the way the roads are. I mean, we saw what happened when we had the snow and there was absolute chaos in this town. How can we keep developing in this town until we have some process to get everybody involved? This town belongs to the university, too, not just to the property owners who pay taxes. So I'd just like to know how, who has some kind of pull in Charleston, who can go down and talk to the governor?
I'm not claiming I have any pull, but I'm down there talking to them all the time. [laughter] time, on a regular basis, and Ed and I will be going down on Monday. I want to make, I want to make sure, too, because I do not want to offend anyone, that the tax-exempt property I'm referring to is not just WVU. There are tons of other tax-exempt entities, both state and federal and other type entities. So it's not just a WVU issue, but it's...
Well, frankly, I just, yeah, I just want to say something about the TIFs, too. I have a real problem with these TIFs that are 30 years, because I hear some people saying, this is new money. Yeah, it's new money, but the, the development that is taking place, it's like giving, giving a benefit to the developers for 30 years.
Absolutely untrue. Absolutely untrue. Untrue, untrue, untrue.
What do the property...
This is...
I think we're getting away from the issue.
It's getting way away. That is not true. I've heard that statement. People that do not understand TIFs say that all the time, they do not understand. I will be glad to, to give you my speech again at another forum, but that, that statement you just made is not true. Let's break up into our little groups. Thank you.
Thank you.
The park structure, the fair, the festival...
Sorry.
Library at the front. Library up here. Those three groups here. The summer parks, the fair. The...
I've got it for presentation.